At this time, we will go ahead and call the committee, the whole meeting here for may to order. If you would please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now at this time, we'll move on to public comments. Let's start off with Prissy. Slappy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I am just coming on an emergency basis to ask for temporary employee. I have an employee that's going off on maternity leave. We thought we had till the middle of June. I came back from vacation on Monday and we don't have till the middle of June. So I did not want to bring somebody in temporarily without the board's approval. I just would like to bring somebody in three days a week for a couple of months, just to keep us afloat. I don't have all the logistics yet because I was kind of blindsided by it when I came back from vacation, but I didn't want to do it without the board, you know.
We've already added that.
Yeah, we've added that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is time to, we will call Lester Ryder from Durant.
I'll wait until later.
All right, sir. Just wake me up. We'll wait you up at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the board at this time? All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to our presentation.
Brandon.
Yes, sir. Did we have one? Sorry, I didn't even see you.
Well, my name's Rob Sanford. We live in Calabonia Township up near the subdivision. And I was told by Mr. Holthausen that we're probably shooting blanks, but I need to hear it from the board. We're here about they want to put those solar panels up there. Apparently, the county has no control over that. Is that what we understand? Because we don't know where to go. We're kind of lost. They just told us we're going to get a solar farm and that's it.
Mr. Handing, I'll answer that question if you would. The county, the Chiatown Township.
I assume there was a problem came up in front of the planning commission.
Yeah, we went there and in one hour it went. They approved it, just like that. And we had nothing, no say so.
Yeah, they probably, they probably did approve it, yeah.
That's unbelievable.
Well, they consider a lot of things. And the day I talked about it, more than one more.
Well, we've been to two meetings.
Now, Calabonia uses their own planning commission. Separate from the county.
These people are not even elected officials, they're appointed. So they appoint a bunch of people and they can rule how our livelihoods goes. Where we live, we bought that place to enjoy the country and now we're going to have a 248 or solar farm we got to look at? How could either way? How would you price it?
Again, did you say Calabonia Township?
It's Calabonia.
They knew the whole.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm told, you know. Well, we just needed some help. We thought we'd come here and see what we could do.
So you would go to Calabonia Township Board and you would take it up with them because they are the folks that appointed that particular planning commission. They do not use county planning commission. It is technically out of our jurisdiction.
No, we, we.
But you had to ask.
Mr. Holthausen kind of shared that with us, but I wanted to hear from you guys.
Yep.
Go around the corner, through the team sheets.
Sorry, could you be more help on that?
Oh, no, Rob.
All right, now we'll move on to our first presentation. Chi-Town Dan Whistle update from Gary Burke. Friends of the Chi-Wassee River. Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Burke with Friends of the Chi-Wassee River. We've been working at this project for quite a few years. I see some new faces here. We have been before the board a few times. We are finally at the point of, you know, like, we're out for bids right now and we hope that construction would go ahead this summer. There's still uncertainty in terms of the bids and whether we're going to be within budget. We've got some flexibility there. What we would be asking, you know, like, for the board is essentially to update your March 10th, 2016 letter, you know, authorizing access, you know, like, through the east park of, you know, like, at Chi-Town. And also, we have been coordinating with parts and, you know, commission in terms of potential, you know, some fill on park property that would be, you know, exceeded and restored, hopefully to the betterment of everything there. A little bit of history, we go back to 2012, you know, like, when we did our, had a phase one, had a grant from the Fish and Wildlife Service, just again, so it's clear, the friends don't own the dam. We were asked to be, you know, like, a local agent for the Michigan Land Bank who actually owns the dam, you know, like, for the removal. You know, like, it's considered a nuisance, attractive nuisance, hazard, you know, and loss of life there. It's really deteriorating and, you know, and essentially, the state, you know, I concur and we're managing some grants to try to get the dam removed and the channel restored. The DQ permitting process was prolonged. That's the last time we were here was in 2016 and they authorized us to, you know, kind of proceed and, you know, like, in cooperation with the county in terms of, you know, like, attempting to get that MDDQ permit. They required some additional things. We had to go back, you know, look for some more funding, you know, and it's just been a challenge getting to where we are, you know, today, but it looks like it's going to go forward. So, really, all we were looking for is just, you know, kind of making sure that the board is on board with the project and continuing forward and allowing access, you know, like, through the park for the construction activities that would be going on, with the idea that everything is going to be restored and be made better. In the long run, we hope that essentially the part of the dam that is, you know, described parcels that are with the Michigan Land Bank, you know, could be beaded over to the county for incorporation into the park, you know, such that when, you know, essentially, there's not real, any liability to the county than what you already got with having the park facility there.
So do we need a motion for revise our letter or just revise it?
Mr. Chair, we can.
Just revise it.
Just revise it.
Commission, change it. We know that sometimes it takes a.
Any, I have the answer.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so at this time, we'll now move on to the econ and physical development portion of our meeting and we'll turn over to Commissioner McMasters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A, move to consider approving the discharge of rehabilitation mortgage dated November 25, 2002, executed by an act handed of 721 South Street, Owasso, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Board. Motion and second. Item A is open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of moving item A on to tomorrow, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, move to consider approving the use of $74 from Waste Management Fund to be used for engineering feasibility cost study, further restoration of six-month pre-aging bridge, historic bridge off six-month pre-growth, and converting adjacent land into a county park and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support. Motion and support. Item B is open for discussion. Yes, Mr. Holthausen.
Yeah, I think it's good that we're doing that. I was also, we got a park closed and both of our, even a township, my township, and I didn't know who's going to, at least it's nice to get a grab and I don't think we should spend a lot of county money on it when we already got one at Johnson Road and 52. Been closed for, I don't know, 20 years, I guess, so. Billion out there that, we had to rebuild for our insurance company, but it just sits there, so.
So my understanding of this is that we use waste management.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said.
So then they come back and so what, the 50,000, the 800,000, then does it come out of general fund from then? If we decide to build?
We'll have our study and what we need for criteria to go get some grants for historic ranges.
Understood.
And there are lots of those up there.
Yeah, I'm sure we had grass, but.
The park that Mr. Holthausen was talking about, I believe there is discussion, potential land swap or something with that, right? I mean, you know, it's not a park.
Yeah, back, back a couple of years ago, the adjacent land or down by the river.
Right.
There was some discussion about some land swaps.
Right.
You know, so we would have much more accessibility to the river there.
Right.
That, that kind of still up in the air, it's still, and the reason it probably didn't really go very far is that park wasn't open.
Right.
So if we did that and had better access to the river, then we might want to do something with more park area. In the past, one of the reasons it closed was very hard to keep track of that park. There was a lot of activity there at one time that wasn't what maybe a park should be used for, and that's one of the main reasons that it closed. That's a long time ago. I mean, that could be 25 years.
And I think that's, I think on the parks meetings I've been to, that's been on discussion. I know Kirby's probably going to be next, but we have talked about that park up there. That's, for those who don't know, that's the one right at the county line before you get to Oakley. It's on the east side, long stretch, almost looks like a, like a state rest stop area. It's kind of what it looks like, but I know there's a lot of, on the parks committee, they have talked about getting that one up in Oakland, too. But I know there was, there was the activity and then also the expense of maintaining.
Yeah, there was another reason to it. For a long time, there wasn't much money for the park. And actually, our Henderson Road Park was our big park and that, those are two pretty close together. It was also, we don't have a lot of park area. You know, we have our Get Road Park and of course, the Chi-Wassee, Chi-Town Park is becoming quite a focal point for us. The dam most likely being removed, that'll again be a bigger focal point, so there's a lot of activity and you just like to do so much every year.
Mr. Holthausen.
Yeah, I don't know if you knew that, I was on the board when that, all that property dumped for the river, come up for sale and it sold, you know, quite reasonable. And at the time, they didn't have any money, you know, and I mean, the parks, and they wasn't using the park, could have been, that was a odd tune time that you could have bought that, because some person bought it. You could have had the whole park and dump by the river and that whole area real nice. That come up for bid and I was.
I remember, I don't remember, it's been a while.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussions or questioning on this side? Hearing none, all in favor of moving item B on to tomorrow, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item C, I move to consider authorizing two mill building grounds prevented to obtain estimates of cost for roof replacement, siding, and or painting the building repair while intense water potable water use at Kirby Road Park prepares to pay from Waste Management Fund.
Support. Motion will have a second. Item C is open for discussion. Same funds. All right, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, move to consider approving the continuation of Village Alliance Precipitation and Community Development Black Grant Program cooperative agreement with Genesee County for fiscal years 2020 to 2022, and authorize the board chair to execute the layers in that effect in Genesee County with the Polting Planning Commission.
Support. Motion, Mr. Plowman, second. Is there any questions, discussion on here? All right, item D, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign.
And Mr. Chair, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMasters. At this time, we'll now move on to County Finance Administration. Mr. Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to consider approving the L-4029 form establishing a million that the county intends to levy for 2019 summer taxes and authorize the board chair, the county clerk, to execute all necessary documents.
Board. Motion will have a second. Items open for discussion or question. Hearing none. All in favor of moving it on tomorrow, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I move to consider authorizing Deputy David Fores to purchase 11 months of service credit in the Mersey system at an estimated cost of $16,675 to be paid by transfer from the participants' 457 plan and authorize the board chair or Kirby to execute the necessary documents, resolution number 19-05-05.
Item B's been moved, second. Now have a second. Item open for discussion, questions? Yes.
What's he do? He has two plans? I guess I don't.
Well, he's got a 457, it's like 401K. That's his, that's his own, but you can fund these kind of moves with transfers from these 401K, 457 plans. It's his, it belongs to him. It's just a transfer to one system to the Merse and pay for the, to pay for the purchase of the 11 months.
Any other questions? All right. Item B, all in favor of moving it on tomorrow, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this, item C, this is for Drake Commissioner. So, Tony, what do you got? We saw the paperwork and you couldn't be here, so now you're up.
Well, it's just that, that's the paperwork I got from Bill Campbell on that truck, you know. He gave me that, so. And that might be a little off because he's got some options on here that he highlighted that we don't need, so. But that was just to give you an idea of what our old trucks worth and what a new one at the municipality discount would cost.
Do you want to, do you want a motion not to exceed, I mean, or do you just?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go over, if it, if it got over $6,000, I wouldn't do it.
Does that come out of your budget then?
Yeah, it comes out of our equipment. Yeah.
And the, and the idea behind this is?
Well, well, the last time we kept them two trucks, I think when we, they both were doling us to death and I think when we sold them, we got $1,500 out of one and $700 out of the other one. And then this one here, we got 54,000 miles on it. The idea of it is, he says, another year or two, it'll be $10,000 to trade, you know. And it's, and they all beat up.
So we're at the right time and place to.
Yeah, and that's what he said, that he should look into.
That's what I thought it was. That's what I thought it was.
Did he look at the truck to see it?
Yeah, yeah, he looked at it.
Because it got a little big with the bangs and it knocks it out.
Yeah, he took that all into consideration. The biggest thing is the mileage on it, you know.
Okay.
That's what he, biggest thing is, so.
I just thought of that.
And actually, for his information, we're selling your truck in what we call a retail market. And we're buying that state pricing, which is 30% off cost, so.
Yeah.
For a truck, I mean, we might want to have our maintenance director take a look at this, too.
Once you get around between 30 and 50,000 miles on them and they ain't all beat up, you can get pretty, you can get close to your money back out of them. That's what Bill was telling me, you know, because we get the municipality discount like that, you know, so.
So there's like a wheelhouse if you want to kind of stay within it.
Yeah, you stay within it. You get out of that. I mean, the trucks are still holding their value, you know. I mean, I know a guy just bought a 2,010 with 153,000 miles on it and give $16,000, you know, I mean, so, I mean, trucks are holding value.
It's the window of opportunity in the time.
Yes, yeah, that's, otherwise I wouldn't even go out of, you know, he, yeah.
Does he actually take the truck then or do you?
No, no, we'd have to sell it, but it's possibility they would buy it, too, and then, and then sell it, you know.
I was wondering how.
Because they can't take trade-ins when you get the municipality discount. You know, they can buy it outright from us if they, if they so choose, you know.
Do you actually sell it or will they sell it for you or?
No, he would help sell it. Bill would help sell it, yeah.
I just thought of that as a D.
Yes, he would help sell it, yeah. But it's just that we can't, you can't, you can't take it in on trade-in, so we probably wouldn't do this unless we did sell that one, you know.
You're going to sell that one first and then get a new one? You can get by a little while.
Yeah, we can get by a little while if we get last time.
Like the miles. Miles are going to keep going up.
Yeah, that's just it.
Or we keep using it.
Or we're going to keep using it, yeah. But if we decide to do it, if we put it out on the market and see if we can get out of it, you know, we can drive the other one, you know. The other one, we, we kind of plan on keeping probably longer than this because it ain't going to get as many miles on it because that's our main truck with all our tools and stuff on it, you know, so.
So I'd make a motion that we would authorize Drake Commissioner to move ahead with the purchase of a new truck under his, ask, under his goal plan.
Or? We want to add not to exceed.
No, it's, it's not, not to exceed.
Yeah, I wouldn't go.
Just to wait because we're looking at 50, you know, 50, 60,000 dollar truck, yeah.
Or?
Okay, man, I'm sure we'll vote 8,000.
Not to exceed 8,000.
Not to exceed.
Yeah.
And now it's open for discussion or questioning to all commissioners.
I think it's, I just think it's smart business. It, it doesn't always work like this, but we're at that window and the market's right and the truck's got the right mileage and this makes sense, so.
Yeah.
Any other word? All right. Hearing all the discussion, item C is now up for vote. All in favor of moving it on to tomorrow for a final vote, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Tony, did you want the equipment, too?
Well, yeah, that's what I brought these up for, to look at a small excavator because we rent one every year, okay? And it doesn't work out bad to rent it, but the problem with it is, you're paying it for every day and we don't use it every day, you know.
Or it's raining.
Or it's raining, yeah. It sits there once our month's up, then you got to either renew the month. And we paid, I think we paid $8,000 rent last year because we kept one for four months, you know, so that's why we made, you know, and we don't get no advantage out of renting it as far as the tax break or anything because, you know.
Let's use, please. Yeah, you're, what, what's a new one cost, Tony? You know right up there?
Anywhere's between 60 and 75,000.
And you're looking for one that's?
Around 10,000 pound machines we're looking for.
Yeah, and that would run about?
Well, I think these here are, what is this one here? I can't remember what the weight on this one is.
Ballpark's good.
Yeah, this, around, right now, these with, with like a thousand hours on it. This is a 8,900 pound machine, it's like 34,000. Here's one that's an 11,000 pound machine, it's a 44,000. It's reading that anywhere from 25,000 to 45,000 is where you would get a good one. You don't want something with a lot of hours on it. I don't want something that would work on all the time either, you know.
Does it come out of your equipment?
Yes, yeah, we've been, she's been saving it to try and do something like this. We use our backhoe, but we do a lot of work in a lot of yards and it does a lot less damage tearing up yards and stuff.
Get pictures?
Yeah. Would, Tony, would you give me?
Yeah.
Like that tomorrow's?
Yes.
I mean, like, can you mail me something?
Yeah, Jenna, I'll tell Jenna if I think, if I don't, just call office, Jenna will give it to you.
Okay.
I see you didn't have a cat equipment in there.
Well, well, the thing about it is, the cats, I had a thing that he sent me, the online thing, and I went online, I did have this, they're about the same, cats. They run, some of them like to get around 11, 12,000 pound machine, they run a little higher because cats got a better resale value, you know, so.
But really, what you need for a motion is just to give you authority to buy a used excavator and the money is coming from your equipment.
Right, yeah, it's coming from our.
So, so what's it either, you're just going to, you're just going to check around? You're going to watch some auctions? You both? You're going to?
Well, it, no, it would either be probably, because AIS sells John Deere and Kamatsu, which is the same motor and the same pumps and everything, so. Or it'd be like Michigan Cat, we check on Michigan Cat. I'm not going to buy it from an individual. Then they've got, there's a Kubota dealer over by Lansing that sells them. We don't have nobody in the county that sells.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we authorize the Drake Commissioner to purchase a used excavator and the money will come from his equipment.
We have a head to exceed number on this.
Preferably this first one.
What's that one?
No, I, I think, he knows his limits, he would call it used, so.
And of course.
This is 105, it's only got 487 hours on it. 10,000 pounds.
Not to exceed that, where it's set.
44,000. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think that's her the second.
Nice one. Not to exceed.
That's even been.
And this one here, and it is, it's got to have, we got to have a ditching bucket and a thumb, hydraulic thumbs. And all of these, like, they're, some of them got them on and the other ones got the hookups to put them on because you got to have the right hydraulics to put a thumb on, you know, so.
Any questions, discussion? It's now open.
I would just like to say thank you for looking at ways to save the county money. You know, sometimes this stuff doesn't work out with the math that's here on this one, too, and appreciate that and you coming to us to approach this, so thank you.
All right. Hearing all the discussion, this is what item?
C1.
C1. Yeah. C there.
She can, she can figure it out by now.
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Karen.
I would like to see if I can, in case it doesn't work out, I can sell them better or something else, in case something did happen to you. Your voice can't work anymore or something changes, okay. But that's just me, I, I've run that type of equipment all my life and it seems to be a prejudice.
For the John Deere, but.
We're going to look at them, too.
Are you for that money and will?
Nolan's over in Lake LaPierre, if you go over there, he's got like 12 John Deeres. Anywhere's from $300 to $1,200, you know, so I mean.
Thank you.
Very good, all right.
All in favor of moving item?
C2.
To, I was, by a vote for tomorrow, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion will carry on to tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to consider authorizing the Buildings and Ground Superintendent to increase the hours of his part-time maintenance staff by about 20 hours a day to provide assigned cleaning staff to the Circuit Courts in the same manner as to now provide to the District Court Building.
Motion on the floor?
On the floor.
Here, Mr. Plowman's support. And vote for discussion, questioning. It's definitely a routine we do every summer, it seems like. More work to be done in the summertime, our parks. All right, hearing that, all in favor of moving it on to tomorrow, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item D carries.
I move to consider approving the purchase of a new 2019 Exmark Industrial mower for $11,839 as recommended by the Buildings and Ground Superintendent to replace a similar 2007 model in need of extensive repairs and transfer $11,839 from the line item number 101-265-934.000, maintenance, to number 101-265-970.000, capital A, for people.
Support. And a motion for item E, we have a second item, it's now open for discussion, question? Yes, sir?
So, I've thought about this a lot and, and for numerous reasons. I think there's pros and some cons, but it is the go-to mower. They do wear out, there is a lot of lawn. Right now, Tim's department is in a pinch. I mean, obviously, stuff wears out, Exmark's a good brand. I'm doing my part to eliminate the grass that needs to be mowed down at the other place with some roundup, so maybe that'll free up the John Deere lawn mower, help you guys out a little, a little bit, but it's, you know, when I first got here, I didn't completely It's, you know, when I first got here, I didn't completely understand the grass mowing and snow plowing, but I went around and I looked, it's hard because it takes a lot of time, it's not, properties aren't contiguous, it isn't like they're big fields, there's little piece-me lots here and there, it takes a lot of time, people, it takes a lot of machines. You know, Tim's absolutely right, he was in a pinch last week, three machines were down. Probably would help to update a new, and get a new machine and, you know, maybe get on a rotation, so every couple of years we're looking at. So it isn't, they're all old, aging and breaking down at once, so. Like I said, I've been, been back and forth, which the Holeshows and I had a big discussion, we went back and forth about different stuff. It was a big discussion the other day. And I, like I said, I, I get it, I, I did a year and a half, two years ago, I was confused sometimes, but it's no small task. It's a cost of doing business, it's a cost of making our, our grounds look nice, so.
Yeah, it's not like going your yard at home.
No, it's a completely different story.
It's hilly, it's bumpy, it's bad terrain.
It's, it's jet on and off trailers, I mean, it isn't like, it isn't, it isn't like, I don't, Gary, we talked about this, Tim said this. It isn't like you mow, put it in your garage for a week, you wipe it off, it's constant news, different people using it.
It isn't like the courthouse lawn.
What's that?
It isn't like what we've got is like this courthouse lawn.
No.
Our parks are...
Rough, some of them are rough, so. Like I said, I've gone back and forth, I appreciate Gary, I appreciate the conversation we had the other day. I've thought about this more than I probably should have, but I think it's, it's, well, it's, you know, it's...
Commissioner Holeshausen?
Yeah, yeah, I know about the parks, uh, several years ago, there was two of us volunteered, we mowed them all. Volunteers, some of them really got out of control, it was wet, I mean, really, I, I'm bad. I mean, the poker turkey broke, I mean, over to Chi Town and North of Henderson, I did not mow them all, mowed them, so. Dripping, so, we used to weed whack around all the stones and everything. I own weed whack at part-time, so, I know what it takes, that was just volunteer work, so now we got two, three people, so you, you know, you're doing better, so. It was tough.
It's hard work. Any other item, or discussion on the item or questions? This is item E, eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, moving from repair maintenance to capital outlay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I move to consider authorizing the coordinator in conjunction with the finance committee and representatives from Maynard Castorianson County Firm to fill the vacancies for finance director, salary grade twelve, seventy-two thousand, seventy-nine thousand, with possible further salary consideration for extraordinary qualifications and experience.
Second.
The motion, we have a second on the item, it's now open for discussion or questioning.
I, I do have a question on this, I noticed that this is not posted yet on the county website under job openings. So, nothing's posted, I'm looking for jobs.
They're posting it for coming weeks?
No, it's posted, we've got, we've got applications, from the website.
Then I was looking under the wrong job, posting it on the county website, alright, I'll go look again.
Yeah, I would like to see it on MAC, Indeed, everything, whatever, the new item. Do I make sure we have the most exhaustive search that we can possibly have?
Michigan Society of...
Professional, professional...
Professional, so, um, you don't count, but it's out on the...
Yeah, yeah, it's Professional Association of...
Professional.
Certified, Professional and Certified Associates or something like that.
Something like that.
Yes, I know.
There's a lot of government postings on that side.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we have to be exhaustive, we've, we've gone through some growing pains with, with this position. We have to lose former finance director under sad circumstances and some issues we've had before. We haven't had good luck with this position for a number of years now. And so if we, we're gonna hurry this, or we think we're gonna fill this in a week, I think we're, we're making a mistake. Let's take our time, I don't care if it takes three months, we have to keep the county running. From our, from what we've been using for six months, ninety months now anyway.
I wish it would have been long.
Yeah, so let's take our time, you know? Let's make sure everyone in the state of Michigan knows we're looking for a finance director so we get the best possible qualified people to apply. And I want to take days looking through all these applications because we have so many to look through, that's what I want. I would suggest we add that rate too, so that we know it's gonna happen, so it's, it's a directive from the board. That would be my recommendation to all of us today, that we actually say, we want, you know, all of these...
We want it on some other job boards.
Yes, in the many job boards, Association of Counties and... Reach out to them to see what they're, where they know where professionals like this get put on other job boards that may be... I mean, it isn't gonna hurt us to put it on a bunch of job boards, you know?
And I think the salary consideration, you know, you know, for great qualifications and so on and so forth is a...
Motionable.
Right.
If we get the best person ever to apply and they want eighty, maybe, you know, eighty-five, maybe we'll get one of them.
Yeah, so we, we have all aspects to look at.
I agree. We know our county firm tells eighty-five is probably real this for this position.
Yeah.
What have we been paying, paying Maynard for, do you know, I mean?
Well, for all the positions, it was about, uh, what?
Twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-eight, no way.
No, yeah.
No way, it was almost...
It was a bit of a...
It was almost three hundred thousand.
I would say for a month.
That we've paid them to date for their services.
I mean, we need to...
And that, but that's between, that's between them, a finance director, coordinator, you know, everyone kinda do it. We're paying kinda three people to do the same job, so we're, you know, that's kinda where we're at, about three hundred thousand and... Two eighty-something that we've paid to date for about a year and a half.
So paying somebody eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars is actually a big savings.
Yes, yeah.
It could be, it could be.
If they're the right person. Well, we're also paying for deficiencies and trust, so, yeah, they had a new finance director.
The group I was thinking of, it's called Michigan Society of Association Executives, which immediately you think, okay, that's, that's directors, and it isn't necessarily, there's, there, it's open for high-level professional things like this, whether it's accounting or it is management or whatever. MSAE would be a place to post, I know a lot of professional people in Lansing look at that for job opportunities.
Well, I would like to amend the motion to add exactly what it has in it, but also with consideration of posting it on job boards such as IndeedJobs.com, Jobs.com, Michigan Association of Counties, whatever Dan has said.
MSAE, yeah.
And I'd like to add that to my motion, just so that that's read in here and it's a board action. And that would be my amendment to this motion, if anyone's upset.
Second.
Okay, so we have a second on the amended motion, so we just make sure that we're gonna be exhaustive, I agree.
The amended amendment.
And there's any more discussion on this, I, I think we all understand, we've gotta have this, it's gotta be filled, but rushing is not the right word. I think we've done it and we regret it, so. Hearing no other discussion on this item.
Turn, I'm gonna say we rushed before, we went, we went a long time, because we had it at a lower, uh, amount.
Slow down the amended item, it's everybody left, it's not anybody that type of thing. All in favor of moving the amended item on to tomorrow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That motion, the amended motion will carry to tomorrow for a final vote.
Okay, lovely, okay. I move to consider approving up to ninety-five hundred dollars for the building of a fiber optic cable connection to the new drain commission building and authorize a coordinator to execute the necessary approval for Daystar Communications and Consumer's Energy Company.
Support. Motion, we have a second, presumably they have internet to do work.
Just, just, so we're correct here, is that what we're calling that?
The drain commission building?
It's, it's, it's... Was it grounds of maintenance?
It's grounds of maintenance and drain commission building.
Okay, well, I don't wanna leave Tim out here.
But, but the drain commissioners wanna use all the technology and all the computers.
We don't wanna leave, we don't wanna leave Tim on this floor.
Alright, Tim on.
Yeah. He just keeps saying, "Or..."
Alright, item G, any discussion, questioning on the item?
No.
Alright, hearing none, all in favor moving on, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
I move to consider approving the tentative two thousand nineteen budget schedule for the two thousand twenty budget process.
Second. Motion, we have a second, item A, any questions, comments?
My only comment about it is that I feel like finishing, finalizing a budget in December is a little late. And I, I don't know if that's been standard practice, I think other counties try to have it done by October or November so that people can do their planning, so, I mean, this budget says we're finishing in December, I feel like it needs some revision, but...
Well, you, it, it should be presented in November. Invariably, there may be some corrections wanted by the commissioners or something else is brought up and, you know, it's, it's not uncommon, we're just talking about final approval this summer. With the, with the...
Maybe we can still bring the first version in October like she said.
Well, I, I put on there a possible draft one in October, yeah. You know, I, I guess I would, I would add, hopefully, we're on course to have our, our audit work done earlier than the last two years, so maybe we can, and I know that, I mean, that's, everything takes time and everything, but part of this is, we all know what some difficulties have been the last couple of years. May, yeah, maybe we get our audit done in time, we get everything reconciled, meet with everybody, maybe we can get it correct in October. But, but that also means, and I don't say this lightly, it also means that all the elected officials in the department heads, when we go to meet with them, meet with us right away.
Because when they get the...
Because, because if you remember, if you remember last fall, I was at a leadership meeting, I don't know if you were there or not, wish I were, but I said, we need to get going on this sooner rather than later. And some people contacted us, gave us information, gave us input, and some never met with us, some dragged their heels, and so thus you got the budget that you got in December, so. Yeah, and I guess a perfect word of the wood, we'd nice to have a draft in September and October, we get everything ironed out and throw it on maybe in November, make sure everything's good for the summer, but...
I mean, honestly, you should be able to do budget projections for two or three years, so it's, it shouldn't be a big surprise every year in October, November, December, what the budget's gonna be. If, you know, hopefully when we get the CFO in place, they can start doing some projections so people are looking out two or three years, rather than almost not having it done, you know, by the end of the year.
traditionally we haven't been able to do that.
I still am.
Sometimes I wear like last year.
Yeah, we, we have not in the past put out projections two or three years.
No, I mean...
I mean, it's just tough enough to...
Yeah, let me, let me kind of, a lot of times we have, we have a rough draft of our, the county budget. Many times it is quite similar to the year before. And that usually is out end of August versus part of September. Then all department heads are supposed to take a look at it, their departments make sure, so actually the, the rough draft, we bring hopefully a final draft in October, and then we, we, this is, looks like the budget and we move it to November for approval. Then in that time period, sometimes things do come up, or we gotta fix something, or the law changes, but we have, but actually a rough draft by the end of August versus September is normally the norm. And it has, and a lot of times too, there's comparisons, let's say there's, this is the proposed budget for two thousand twenty, it was nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, and sixteen.
Well, I mean, when, when I went to the MAC training, that was one of the things they recommended is, I mean, it's really pretty simple, simple concept, that budget is not going to change drastically from year to year, or shouldn't. So it shouldn't be too hard to do projections. Well, we are working with county department heads who are elected officials and like Dan said, it, it, some of the responsibility falls on them. We, as commissioners, can't... Right, but you have to set the pace for that, if you start thinking about if we're gonna do projections, you know, yeah.
Yep.
It all sounds good, but...
I would like to have a, uh, and it's, it's in there, possibly a, a draft in October, get it over me. That, that's, that's the goal. And I guess to add to that, I welcome all of you to come to leadership meetings and, and stress to some of these department heads or elected officials.
I wasn't informed that we weren't invited. I was just gonna say, you know, that's a leadership meeting, I may inject.
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, is that, is that what, we're not invited anymore?
We were invited.
At all?
We're invited, it's a leadership, we gotta be leaders, yeah.
But, and then Dan and I were crashing the parties.
It was not necessarily intended, and this is no disrespect, it was for the department heads and the elected officials that ran departments to kinda collaborate and talk, and then, and I mean, I, I don't mind that once it was there, but you can't invite all of you, because then we're gonna have to have an open meeting, and it was defeating the purpose is what that leadership was really all about, was for the department.
I guess we have to go to them because they know, and no disrespect here, no, and no, I'm not talking to you, or... That, because I, I, you're looking at me, but we don't see some of these elected officials or department heads at meetings. So how the hell are these fools to know what's going on?
And we see them, we see them two months after the budget was adopted.
Oh, what about this, well, well, where were you, you know? I mean, okay, we can look around, we see who's here, okay? And, you know, there's others that aren't. I'm not picking at anybody, but...
But if we're not invited, I wanna know why we're on the schedule to host it, that's what I wanna know.
Well...
Why are we put on the schedule to host to bring in baked goods for everyone who's not invited?
I would say you're not invited. But he meant, he meant gracious. If it just wants to be a mainstream juice, whatever, morning, you talk about muffins or whatever, fine. But don't be bitching to us when we do stuff here and we haven't heard from anybody because people haven't talked.
But we're supposed to guard it, yeah.
How? We're just supposed to absorb it?
We're just supposed to absorb it, no.
Sorry.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen. Alright, guys, we're gonna have Lord and Mia, look, we'll have deputies remove to make sure she wants to, so, that's fine. We are on item H, before we got off track, this is about, yes, this is about the budget area. All of them, in favor of moving that on to a final vote tomorrow, we can argue more, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Okay, Mr. K. I move to consider approving one-day human resources training for both of the administrative, administration sections, finance specialist, and additional one-day training and spreadsheet applications for the finance specialist and one commissioner, total cost, five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Support. And the motion, we have a second, any questions, discussion on this, we didn't bring it up yesterday, yeah.
I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but I've been talking about this for twenty-eight months, and I think we've had the right direction of having some, having some training to employees in human resources and actually having a legitimate human resource office to lessen the liability of the county.
That's the objective.
Sounds good. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, item I, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And, and I'll add too, that there's the MAC conference this summer, and Mr.'s, if you can, it's in August, I know you can't always, but if you can attend, it's really an excellent, they have excellent speakers. They talk about new laws that'll affect all counties, municipalities, which we represent, and so you might wanna keep that in consideration too. The more training that we have internally, the, the better we'll be able to operate. And Mr. Chairman, that...
I want to thank Commissioner Plon, very good. At this time, we'll go ahead and move on to Public Safety Court, Commissioner Webster, you're in.
Thank you. I move to consider authorizing district court to hire a deputy court clerk, his salary grade three, thirteen dollars and ninety cents to eighteen dollars and six cents an hour, starting at thirteen ninety to fourteen ninety-four, fill a vacancy.
Support. Motion, Commissioner Master, seconds, any questions, discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor by item A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, I move to consider approving up to five thousand dollars for additional analysis of nine-one-one MERS funding by Yo and Yo and authorize the central dispatch director to sign all necessary documents. The board approved up to twenty thousand dollars for this purpose on August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, and then an initial contract of eighty-five hundred on February seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Support. Motion, item B's, second, Commissioner Master, open for discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor moving on to tomorrow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Item C, consider the reappointment of Wilma Bowen, a Democrat at the Chaiwasi County Jury Board for a new six-year term as recommended by thirty-fifth Circuit Court Judge Matthew J. Stewart in accordance with MCL six hundred point one-three-oh-one.
Motion, we have a second, items open, discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, item C, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D, consider adopting resolution number nineteen dash zero five dash zero six, approving and requesting MERS to rename MERS divisions nineteen and twenty so as to clarify they do not contain any nine-one-one central dispatch active or retired personnel.
Support. The motion, Chairman Bruce, second, item D, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor moving on, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Webster, for your report. So now we'll go ahead and move on to Health and Human Services, Commissioner Carver, you're in.
Thank you. Item A, consider accepting and placing on file the two thousand and eighteen health department annual report.
Support. The motion, Commissioner Holeshausen with a second, any questions, discussions? Derailing discussion, I can take this down rabbit holes anywhere. Hearing none, all in favor, item A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Health or security.
Item B, consider authorizing the health department to contract the Chaiwasi Regional Education Service District for social work services and...
and maternal infant health program in the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars for the period of seven-one-nineteen through six-thirty-twenty, and authorize the Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Item D, motion, second, any question, discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, motion carries.
Item C, consider authorizing the Health Department to contract with Great Lakes Commission, the River Cleanup Grant, in the amount of six thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents, for the period of four-twenty-two-nineteen through nine-nine-nineteen, and authorize Health Director to sign all necessary documents.
Support. Motion, we have a second, items, open discussion, questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, same sign, motion carries.
D, consider an appointment to the Chaiwasi County Mental Health Authority Board, Chaiwasi Health and Wellness. The Health Authority Board recommends the appointment of Brick Menlo for a three-year term.
Support.
Motion, we have a second, items open for discussion, questions, comments?
Yes. I guess I said it yesterday, I'm on the nominating committee, and we interviewed, we selected him, and then we moved it to the full board, and it was approved by the full board, now it comes to the commissioners, it's final, so he should be on board.
So he's been vetted?
Yeah.
All right, good, item D, all in favor, moving it on to tomorrow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, same sign, motion carries.
That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Garber, and now it's time to move on to Chairman Root's report. Garber. Oh, that's. But thank you for, you're the winner. Thank you everyone for your.
It's been too long to move.
I know, you know, Ron. I just wanna go, I just wanna go back to leadership for a second, okay, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No, I, I do wanna say, I think of everything on this agenda, I'm shocked that the budget calendars, the thing we got the most on topic, um, it's kind of. That would've been my, my last one that I thought, but actually I have nothing really, the only thing was that HR conference, and the Excel conference now, so it looks like we took care of that, but. That's all I have. I'm going back with the way this boards come together, working together, we're getting things done, it'll continue in the summer, I'm sure. All right, at this time, we're gonna have to go on to other agenda items, and we have a few before I ask for any others, and we'll start with Commissioner Webster, I believe you want to talk about the Circuit Court and medical leave.
Yes, so as Chrissy Latt presented during the public comment, she had a person who was gonna be leaving for medical leave mid-June, that person needs to actually go now, she needs to bring somebody in temporarily as soon as possible, and so she wants us to consider that tonight, so I would move to authorize the Circuit Court Administrator to hire a temporary person to cover a medical maternity leave.
Okay, there's my second question on the floor, we'll give Commissioner, we'll give Chairman Root the second on that one, any items open for discussion, questions?
I think, I think Chrissy made a clear show, so just send Zach over quickly, she'll be with us on some more of the details, but I appreciate the fact that we're not hearing about this afterwards, she approached Commissioner Webster on this afternoon, and has told her, come to the meeting, let's get this on the agenda, let's get going on it, and she did that, so very thankful she did that, and I'm sure she'll be with us on the wage amount and all that stuff.
Okay, good. Any other questions, discussion, we'll add to the agenda item for tomorrow, if this passes. All right, hearing none, all in favor of adding it to tomorrow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, same sign, motion carries. And I believe you had one other issue you wanted to discuss.
I did, um, last night, Mr. Hubbard came and approached us about the two vacancies on the nine-one-one board, and so I just wanna be sure that those are posted, and that we're accepting applications, so that we can hopefully make a, um, an appointment next month.
Yep, we took care of that today, Casey was working on it today.
I'm posting.
And some of our other boards and outside vacancies, we're gonna put them on, say that. Get them in the newspaper, get them on our website.
Which is often, well, listed.
Where are they posted on the website?
They're often on the website, too.
Where are they?
Oh, I've seen them scrolling on the front floor.
On the homepage, under news articles, is where you'll see for vacancies, click on that, it'll take you to some of the current board, boards that have vacancies, central dispatch is on there for both positions.
So it's under news articles?
Yeah. And then if you scroll, if you scroll towards the bottom midsection of the, of the webpage, you'll see where it says, also boards, commissions, and committees, view vacancies, and apply now, and it'll show you all of the vacancies on boards.
Okay.
Again, the Finance Director is on the website.
And is that in the same, where would that, where was that posted?
On the homepage, you'll see a list of different, how do I, go to, um, I think it's, uh, view job postings, and then select general, and then under the general tab.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's the dropdown menus and the job postings, that bring in different parts, Health Department, Sheriff's Office, General. Because if you just go up there to job postings, it always is blank, there's nothing over there, you gotta go through the.
Right, because the tabs is job postings, and there's nothing here, so.
Yeah, you gotta go through the dropdown menu, which I don't even know why, it's kind of clunky, they should all just be out there, the job postings, it should all just come up, no matter who they're through. I agree, because all applications come here anyway, so I don't know why they're separated in tabs, but, that's again, another conversation about what's. That is a conversation we ought to have, is there anything else you want to add?
That's it.
Okay, are there any other commissioners that would have any other agenda items you want to discuss at this time? All right, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our second opportunity for the public comment. Former Commissioner Snyder, is it your floor or what?
I really wish he wouldn't have referred to me like that. Past Commissioner, it was a bad taste in my mouth. Anyway, as I was requested by, uh, Commissioner McMasters, as she come up with something, a rich proposal, as it's dealing with homeless veterans in our county. And that one, you can speak out to your circle.
Thank you.
Uh, the whole thing is that, uh, as I have mentioned, is, is, uh, homeless veterans, we do have them. Depending on what report you read, it's anywhere from a number of thirty, and one I found yesterday was referring to, there's a hundred homeless vets in our county. Nobody knows of them, has this because they're, they look like everybody else. They're staying in the woods, they're staying wherever, uh, and it is a problem. As is, uh, what we're proposing, is that, a bunch of veterans have already gotten together, we have bought, uh, trailers, uh, I was given a trailer today by a young lady, uh, we knock them down to the frame, we get them weighed, get plates, uh, plates put on them, and then we build them up, and it's from ground up. Uh, there is a lot of information, and I'm not gonna hit you all with it now, just that you know that it, it does exist. Some ho- homes, they can be tiny homes, or they can be either a, a small shelter. That, this one that I'm passing around is from Kansas City, they have a veteran village out there, and here is one that's on wheels, that is right here in our county. I'm not saying that, uh, they're, uh, they're gonna be that large, or that pretty. Uh, we're doing it out of our own pocket, the veterans, as is, so, uh, we've been scrounging and doing yard sales and what have you for building materials for the last couple of years. Uh, the only things is with the laws for the state of Michigan on tiny homes, is that they don't recognize that. Tiny homes on wheels, state doesn't have anything for them or against them, uh, but you can't get them licensed as a tiny home on wheels. Uh, so that's why we go down to, knocking them down to a frame, and then we can get them as a utility trailer, and we can get plates on it, then once we build a, but building on it, uh, we can put lights and plates on them, and drag them around just like anybody else, but, and there's trailers all over the county. Uh, the only things is, the state does say is to go down the highways, you cannot be any more than eight and a half feet wide, thirteen and a half feet tall, and don't exceed your axle width. Other than that, then go crazy. Uh, tiny homes, you can build them from, uh, like a primitive camper, which is only four walls and a roof. No electrical, no plumbing, no nothing, it's just four walls and a roof. Or you can do as that picture there says, and that's got a elevator bed in it, it's got every amenity in the world in it, and it's very nice, very pretty, and very expensive. We can't afford that stuff. Um, I got a lot of reports, as is, and one is right here, printed, uh, uh, helping homeless veterans in the Chaiwasi County, and yes, there are homeless vets, and from somebody's paper I will not mention, independent. Uh, the outfit in Bancroft, they are another one that had another article in the paper. Tells all about the good things that they're trying to do to help the veterans in their facility. I have all kinds of things on, uh, how you can, uh, deal with the laws, zoning, uh, and all for tiny homes for the county, and different outfits, tells you all the whats and what fours, and how about, you can go about. Here in the last, uh, week or so, Cadillac has put up a veteran village. As is, and, uh, it's a great thing.
Can you give us that article, are you giving us all those articles, or?
I'm going to, uh, ask very nicely for one of you commissioners to tell our, uh, very nice, uh.
Thank you.
Casey, to make copies. As, but I'm trying to whip through all this malarkey, as, as to, you know, so it, it's easily done, as is, uh, on top of all this, uh, we have the building materials, we've got about two dozen, uh, trailers. I have talked to a veteran in, uh, Chesney, I'm trying to get yell over a foghorn over here. Or is it a wounded moose, I'm not sure which, but.
A little bit of both.
Anyway, a gentleman up in, uh, that owns a business up in, uh, Chesney, I could never pronounce his name, anyway, it's, uh, Big Rock Millwork, Chris Bell Yaya, whatever, he's, uh, builds cabinets, very successful. He has volunteered to build cabinets for all of our trailers, his cost, which is, he's donating them to us. He has a friend that is another veteran up in St. Charles, that does floors, anything from a pogo to, uh, to vinyl, no cost. And the, his, uh, manager, as it used to work, and he retired from a place right beside this big, big rock, they do renovations and upgrades on RVs, they're willing to come up with windows and doors and such for our trailers. Uh, so that saves us a lot of work, and trying to find, uh, you know, find this kind of stuff. Because we're, we're patching and mixing and doing a lot of things. So basically, all we're doing is taking up four walls and a ceiling up there, and they're, they're doing it. They're installing it, they're cutting it, they're, they're doing it all, all we're gonna do is just get it back a trailer that is done. Uh, we do not by law, has this have to have, uh, you know, water, sewer, and all that other. Uh, we are putting compost toilets in them, and the big, uh, coolers and stuffs for water, this is for them to use as a day-to-day. Uh, I was hoping, as is, that you guys would consider letting us use a little bit of property where you guys were talking about the jail. There was twenty-six acres out there, county-owned, zoned by Corona. Uh, Joe Sawyer, I talked to him a while ago, he's not against the idea, but he's not real thrilled about it, he had other, some other things going. Uh, but irregardless, you guys own it. And we don't need anything, we don't need water, sewer, electrical, all that other, but as I say, it's all primitive. It's to get the veterans out of cardboard boxes, and into something that is a good and warm shelter. Because we are insulating top to bottom, better than most houses. Uh, and that's it, it's not gonna cost you anything, just, we're just looking for a place to be able to put them, and get the veterans the help they need, and in one area. Uh, the advantage, as you guys already know, uh, you got the Juvenile Detention Center there, so you've got cops in the area. Uh, it's across the road from Miami, you got two churches, you got fast food places, and you got, uh, the SADA goes into juvenile detention half dozen times a day, so they got transportation. We are not just handing them a set of keys, the veterans are gonna have to deal with a VA upstairs, uh, do their paperwork, uh, get, uh, you know, a claim if possible, get registered with a VA hospital, which they don't have now. They fall through the loops with the county, this is because, as homeless, they do not have an address, and without an address, they're homeless, they're not part of the county, so the VA cannot help them. So we gotta give them an address, and this would be a perfect opportunity to help them always. Uh, if they do get a claim, they get some money, uh, you know, because of being in Vietnam, uh, at that point, they would be able to move out and find an apartment, car, whatever, and presume, to start having a real life. Uh, also make them, uh, go to, uh, Michigan Works, so they can go and get, uh, trained to do something other than just sit around. We're trying to help them, but everything we're doing right now is just strictly the trailers. Yes, we can do more later, but right now, we can put, produce the trailers, and start getting, uh, veterans off the street, and where we can help them. That's it in a nutshell, and I know I talked more than I should have. But I only wear the watch, I don't watch it. Okay, so if you have any questions, and you would like to meet up, uh, you know, afterwards, uh, I will gladly show you all this other paperwork and point out, uh, anything you have, okay?
Thank you, that is a very comprehensive presentation.
Can you give that to Casey, they ever make colored copies?
Any other public that would like to address the board this time? Get out of here, it's colored copy.
Well, it's a little hard to look at it in black and white.
You're on.
All I got is, I give you guys a copy of this, this is what we're gonna give the, uh, Genesee in Saginaw County, it's about dealing with the percentages for the project, and we got a meeting tomorrow, or Friday, John's gonna go up, uh, they're probably not gonna be happy with it, but. I don't, I don't think.
That could be, yeah, I know, Steve.
Um, I don't know if, if they're gonna try to approve the final order or not, but if they do with the percentages we got, our guy is gonna vote no on it, and then they'll just go to arbitration board, and we'll go back and get it very the right way. First time around, it did not get done properly, so, we'll see what happens.
Big deal, it's a big deal what we're doing, thank you for everything. All right, hearing no more public comment, at this time, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, thank you all. Thank you all.